Roll call please.
Dr. Cortolino?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Dr. Kane?
Here.
Dr. Mudra?
Here.
Mr. Morello?
Here.
Ms. Newton?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Genevieve Lakey?
Here.
And Jace Rock?
Here.
For our president.
Okay, thank you. Please rise to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tevis, please read the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law Statement.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure that the rate of public with advance notice to attend the public parties and the genuine business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act of the Montreal County Board of Education, approve this meeting date. Notice that the meeting concluded in this old apartment, in school building, all Montreal public schools, and all public library, the Montreal County Board of Education, and ministry of law, the building, and Montreal public school website, and advertise on the day of celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Tevis. Good evening, high school students. We'll have your report now.
Hi, everyone. Starting with sports, the baseball team beat Wolf Lake two days ago six to five, and a comeback win in extra innings. It was a great win for the team and hopefully for shadowing of what's to come. The team is currently six and one, and is playing as we speak. The track team won their dual meet against Morris Town over the break, and took home even more medals at Saturday's Madison Relays. Alex Rogers, Jackie Zhang, and Willard John Wake up took first in the discus relay, and beat the meet historical record with a total of 313 feet. Furthermore, the golf team is currently having one of its toughest conference schedules that it has had in years, but it currently stands at one and one. It defeated Go-Go over spring break, but unfortunately lost today. Nevertheless, their top performers include Steven Paradise and Joe Bel Castro, and two members of the girls' team were invited to participate at the Red Devil Invitational at Copper Hill Country Club. Those students were Nicole and Emily Kay.
For clubs, the robotics team will be traveling to Louisville, Kentucky tomorrow morning to represent MTHS in the Vex Robotics World Championships. Participants included Noah Lichtenstein, Randy Devon, Pudham Shaw, Ryan Shaw, Ron Patel, Patrick Keegan, Noah Sinigal, Vicky Chang, Amish Patel, Rob Airsin, Carlin Young, Adam Testa, and Marty Tama. DECA is preparing for their trip to national later this month. The tournament will be in Orlando, Florida. The Drama Club will soon be hosting their Broadway night. Students have auditioned and are sharing their performances.
Moving on to the school, each month of the last two months, the administration has selected two high school students to win the Character Council Award. The goal of the award is to honor students who go above and beyond to make a difference in Montreal. The February winners are Nicholas Kallath and senior Sammy Booth. So, a huge congratulations. Allen Lai was recently selected to join the All-State Orchestra as a chalice. This is an incredible feat and one rarely accomplished, but more so than that, he is one of the first students ever to be accepted as a freshman to play for the group. It's an unbelievable honor. Furthermore, MTHS art students recently participated in the 27th Annual Black Wealth Stage Art Show. Jessica Zhang won first place in acrylic painting, and Leanne Blue took second place in colored pencils drawings. Other students that participated included Christian Herman with a pencil drawing, Alia Kiro with a pen drawing, and Jennifer Capugio with a paper match. Furthermore, we had our Shoprite Stars announced for the third marking period, and while you'll hear more about them tonight, for academics, the winner was Claire Sullivan; for athletics, Anthony Fanna; for the arts, Jordan Thaler; for community service, Majae Lustmaker; and for leadership, Samantha LaGuard.
Looking into the future, March Period Three is now over, and the year is finally coming to an end. AP tests are less than three weeks away, and students will be completing their final forms this Thursday. Seniors have just two weeks to make their college decisions. Overall, the year is beginning to wrap up nicely, and everyone is excited for what is to come.
Thank you. This must be so exciting for you. Flying down into high school, a little nervous. Looking forward to college?
Definitely.
Yes. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here as often as you have been, and for your reports. We'll have something for you at the end of the year. Any questions from the board? Superintendent's report?
Hi, good evening, everyone. There were a few items under my remarks tonight. The first is park testing, which remarkably begins again next week, starting here at the high school. A letter from my office is going out to all parents in the district about the park testing. I don't know if it went out today, or someone shaking their head, yes. So, I want to thank our parent leaders for their efficiency, getting it out right away, which explains a little bit more about the park testing, the dates, and the opportunities parents have with regard to the park testing itself. Tonight, we'll be asked of the Board of Education to approve a revised calendar for next year. Revisions are relatively minor. I will speak to those right now. The first revision is actually on July 3rd, with the 4th of July being on Saturday this year. We have created July 3rd as the actual employee holiday, as is the case with these kinds of holidays fall on a weekend, and so the district will be closed on Friday, July 3rd due to the holiday being on July 4th. That's the first change. The second change on the calendar does affect our students, and this is on October 8th. We will have an early dismissal day for professional development purposes, so our students on that day will have a half day of school, and our staff will be involved in two activities. The first is the Youth Empowerment Alliance will be doing its workshop for all seven buildings in different teams that afternoon for our teachers, so that's the first part of that initiative we have going forward. And the second part of the afternoon will be used by our teachers for various kinds of compliance issues that they must be trained in, and this will give them some time during that afternoon to get involved with those matters. So, that is on October 8th. Any questions from the board about the calendar? The next item is about something called Innovate New Jersey. Innovate NJ is an initiative from the New Jersey State Education Department to support innovation and practice through fostering collaboration and sharing. It is something that you have to apply for and be accepted in to become part of this initiative called Innovate NJ, and we want to congratulate our Humanities Research Program supervisor of Humanities is David Tubs, and also Austin Thompson, our supervisor of technology or our technology manager. Two of them submitted an application for this program, and we have been accepted into the second cohort of schools, so this is a very, very nice honor for us, and certainly supporting a very, very worthwhile program. So, I want to thank David and Austin, and now our Humanities Research Program has been recognized by the state as an innovative program of excellent practice. And the last item, which isn't on the agenda, but I did want to mention, is that we recently received our results for CUSAC, which is the Quality Assurance Program here in New Jersey for schools, and we have passed, and in the words of the Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Field Services, that we have now been considered a high-performing district based on the CUSAC scores, so we're very pleased to have jumped over that hurdle, so to speak, and I'll be sharing more of the details with the Board of Education. If you would be pleased, and I would specifically thank Andrew Woodring, our Assistant Director of Curriculum Instruction, who had to lead the district, and a lot of work had to do with curriculum revision and instructional practice to move us in this direction as a high-performing district. So, thanks, Andrea. Okay, any questions from the board about any of those items?
Dr. Freed, on behalf of the board, would you please send our congratulations and thank yous to David and to Austin?
Sure.
And on behalf of the board, Andrea, thank you.
Andrea, I'd like to thank you, but I... Well, you'll pardon me for saying this, but I don't think anybody here in Montreal needed CUSAC to tell us that we're a high-performing district.
Okay. The next area is the presentation tonight. This is our Shoprite Stars, and I see Mr. Ken Nazak is here, our Assistant Principal here at Montreal County High School. So, Ken, thanks for being here, and I'll ask Karen Cortolino, as we always do, to join Ken and to announce our honorees for this evening.
Good evening. It is once again my pleasure to stand in front of you to announce the Shoprite Stars winners from March Period Three. As you know, our stars were nominated in one of five categories by staff members in the building that ultimately selected by the administrative committee. Please join me in recognizing the following winners. In the field of academics, congratulations to Claire Sullivan. Claire's accomplished a lot in her career at MTHS. She is a two-time state champion in categories on the Ferencsik Debate Team where she is vice president. She has competed in National History Day events, qualified for state competition two years ago. Claire is a member of National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society where she is the active president. She received the 2013 and 2014 New Jersey Governors Award in Arts Education. Claire is also among a handful of students who can say that they have taken 11 AP classes in their career, including five this year. To that end, Claire also achieved AP Scholar with Distinction Status by the College Board. Outside of the classroom, she is a member of Reach, Pathways, and regularly volunteers at a homeless shelter. It's quite clear that Claire's talent in the classroom matches her heart outside of it, and we are happy to have her walk through our halls. Again, congratulations, and thank you for your contribution. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Anthony Fanna. Anthony is only the sixth student in MTHS district to achieve over 100 wins on a wrestling team, finishing his career with 106. He was also a Morris Knowles Tournament Champion and two-time state qualifier. Apologies. I'm sorry. Finishing Anthony's career with 106 total wins. He was a Morris Knowles Tournament Champion and two-time state qualifier. However, rather than continue to list Anthony's many athletic accomplishments, I'll leave you with this short story. Less than six months ago, Anthony tore his ACL and risked missing his entire senior year on the wrestling team. Regardless, Anthony was a practice every day as a leader, and through intense physical therapy, came back to compete and lead the varsity team to a District Two championship. Again, congratulations and thank you for your contribution. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Jordan Thaler. Oftentimes, an audience attending a play or musical does not know the hard work that goes on behind the scenes. From stage crew, I got to see this hard work firsthand when I was invited to perform in Legally Blonde. For the past four years, Jordan has dedicated a large portion of his life to making sure the show onstage would go off without a hitch, and that each performance was better than the last. In addition to Jordan's extraordinary work with the Drama Club, which included everything from building sets, to painting, to collecting concessions, and working tech, he also helps run nights for Lazar's performances and sound for School of Rock. Jordan was a true leader in the stage crew, gave so much of himself backstage that performers onstage could shine. Again, congratulations and thank you for your contribution. In the field of community service, congratulations to Majae Lustmaker. Majae is the president of School of Rock and one of its lead vocalists. However, offstage, Majae has helped raise over $24,000 from Montreal Education Foundation. More recently, she assisted with the organization and delivery of the School of Rock's first rock giving concert, which helped raise over $1,600 from Montreal homeless funds. This money was critical and went to help families in need to enjoy a better holiday. Majae will be attending Pace University in New York City next year. We congratulate you on this accomplishment and thank you for your contribution. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Samantha LaGuard. Samantha is the epitome of whatever a leader should be. In everything Samantha does, she does so with kindness, passion, consideration, honesty, and dedication. Samantha was instrumental in organizing and starting the Rations Challenge Club at the high school. One of the first projects she assisted with was writing each staff member a personalized note before the holidays, explaining how and why they have possibly impacted life on campus. I still have mine hanging proudly in my office. Samantha also assists with life skills classes as an active member of FBLA Key Club, Stage Crew, and Make-A-Wish. She plays on the softball team, is editor of the yearbook, and also teaches karate to young children as well as CCD classes at her church. This next piece has not yet been publicly announced, but I am proud to be the first to share that Samantha was also just named as a Character Accounts Award winner in the month of March. As Dave mentioned, Character Accounts is a monthly award that we give to students who demonstrate the six pillars of character, which are respect, citizenship, caring, trustworthiness, justice, and responsibility. Again, congratulations and thank you for your contribution.
Sue, did you want the Shoprite Stars together for a photo? If the winners of the Shoprite Stars would head towards the scarecrow. It's a photo op for Mom and Dad, too. If anybody wants to go home, you can. We won't be offended, I promise. But you're welcome to stay. Totally up to you. Have a good night, and congratulate me.
It's so great of you. Thank you. It's just great of you. I really forgot where it was.
I was just so worried it was gonna get taken by somebody else and just disappear.
It was really great of you to track us down.
I'm glad I could help.
You did.
And congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, it's exciting. Thanks.
Now, of course, the government students have to stay. They need signatures.
I know.
Did they get them?
No, I don't think so.
No, they got them.
They have homework to get. They can watch the sun.
Okay, well, now here we are, all together again. The regular crew. Okay, back to business. This is the superintendent's report. Are there any committee reports? Anybody?
Curriculum meeting next Tuesday.
Let's see. Ad hoc committees?
We're gonna discuss the security meeting next meeting.
Thank... What?
We're gonna discuss about the security meeting at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Okay. Any delegate liaison? Just to remind everyone, April 30th is the last Morris County School Boards meeting of the year. Words will be given, perfect attendance. And Montreal will get one. And just a brief recap on March 26th. At the March 26th meeting, both Mike O'Brien and Charlie and... Well, three of us were there, Mike and Charlie and I, and we heard a very nice talk on tenure negotiations from Schwartzheim and Adelstein. Any other delegate liaison reports? Any PTC liaison reports? Any updates on negotiations? I'll just give a very brief media renovation report. Plans are going to the Department of Education, right? And there is a meeting this Thursday, which will be a marathon meeting, which really kind of almost wraps up the planning portion of the media renovation. We'll spend a lot of time on finishes at this point, so it's very, very exciting. It's really gonna happen, and I think we'll all be very pleased with the renovation of the High School Media Center. I'll open it now to the public for items on the agenda. Seeing none of close public participation, motion for items... Is there any agenda?
No.
Motion for items J through O?
No, no. Second.
Okay, any questions on J?
Karen?
Yes?
Got a question about J four. There's a resolution here. Dr. Fisher's pension and health benefits reform. I think it might be worth commenting on that because it appears that, from this resolution at least, that the governor is interested in shifting some of the cost with benefits and pensions over to the local communities. That sounds like a good idea for our budget, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's who you brought that up to. Yes, there is... There are various task forces out there in Trenton that are looking at pension reform. There's a catchphrase for it, slips my mind right now. But part of the reform package could include shifting payments of the teacher's pension from the state to the local district, the local school district. That would be devastating to our budgets.
Do you know how much that might be at this point? Do you have any idea?
Can you tell me?
I'm sorry. Is there any idea how much that budget may be, how kind of impact that might have on our budget?
I simply don't have enough information at this point in time, but certainly more goes out from the Department of Education, I'm certainly not by the door with that.
It's being advertised as budget neutral. I'm not sure how that happens, but that's what they're saying.
Budget neutral in the short term, but potentially not so neutral in the long term. By my guess. Thank you.
No, thank you, David, for pointing that out. Any other questions on J? So, in any event, to say to the public, we are casting a resolution that addresses that issue. You can read it for yourself, but it states we are opposed to that.
Karen, I just want to mention I have J one. It's awful nice of an individual to make a donation towards MTHS Robotics.
Thank you, Matt. Anything else on J? K? L? I'll just say I'm sorry to see I have Green Spam in fire. She's a fixture here. She'll in this. L? M? N? Oh, a lot of N tonight. Policy. And question? Okay. O? V for vocal?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Mudra?
Yes.
Ms. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
And Dr. Cortolino?
Yes.
Those are just passing.
So, I have a yes vote, except it's staying on K1. Okay, there are just a couple of items I wanted to talk to the board about and the public. One is Classroom Closeup, New Jersey segment to feature Montreal schools' news broadcast. This is our second classroom closeup. The first classroom closeup was on Lazar News Network. The classroom closeup is Channel 12. I don't know if anyone has ever seen it, but we're very proud that Lazar News Network was featured in the past, and now, on March 3rd, a production team was sent to take our new Humanities Research Program, and that segment will air in September, October, and November. So, look for that. It's really quite a distinction, and thank you, Sue, for putting it in.
We have another one, too.
A third one?
A third one.
A third one.
Wow.
We have one coming up this summer.
Okay, we'll hear about that. Thank you. The second item is an email I received today from a community member regarding the Pilgrim Pipeline. The Pilgrim Pipeline, as you know, probably will use the same right-of-way if it's approved as the towers, the PSC and G towers, only they'll be buried. The pipeline is, there are pipelines there now. This is a new pipeline. PSC and G has said they will not allow it at this point. However, school districts that could be affected by the pipeline are passing resolutions in support of PSC and G's action. I was sent just a couple of resolutions. We saw that the Watcher Board of Education supports the efforts of the borough of Watchon and their opposition against the Pilgrim Pipeline, and you should know that our municipality is opposed and is publicly opposed to the pipeline. Another one is a school district of the Chattings passed a resolution on the recommendation of the superintendent of the Board of Education supports the efforts of Chatham Borough and Chatham Township and their opposition against the Pilgrim Pipeline. So, I was wondering if the Board would be interested in passing a similar resolution at our next meeting? If so, we'll put that on the agenda, and these are, I'll give the wording to our business administrator, and you can, you're good at that, so you can make a resolution. And the last thing I just wanted to talk to the Board about was its Relay for Life request. As many of you know... They did. They all said yes. Yeah, right? They said yes, right? Yeah, it's going to go on the next agenda. Yeah, I look up and do. So, Relay for Life and a request for REMAX balloon. The organizers of the annual Relay for Life event, which takes place on school property, they've required REMAX to be allowed to provide rides in their tethered hot air balloon. We had previously approved the request pending insurance verification. Unfortunately, the request seems to be incompatible with our general liability coverage. There's a specific exclusion, which applies to aircraft. Because the ant is so highly visible in our community, I thought that rather than have the administration bear the brunt of the denial, we would at least have a board discussion and either, you know, that's what we could totally do, support the administration, or consider some other course of action. So, that's why it's on the agenda.
That's why the insurance thing will be mad, not the administration or the Board.
Yep, absolutely, Charlie.
Yeah, we can't have, we don't have insurance, it'd be very difficult.
Yeah, there's an, we understand REMAX provides insurance, but our policy specifically excludes aircraft. So, beyond the REMAX liability coverage, we would be bare, really. No coverage at all. Okay. I'll open it up to the public for items not on the agenda. Okay, seeing now, closed public participation. Okay. If you could come to the mic, please.
I think I got it.
You got first.
I think I took out.
If you would just state your name, where you live, and just so you know, our policy requires that you look at your comments to five minutes.
My name is Water. I'm Dr. Han. I live in Monville. Actually, I just got a simple question. It's about the system. I want to know how the complaint system works, because I'm already filed some kind of complaint after enforcing that according to the policy 9130. I want to know what's the process on the Board? What is the communication channel? What is the response behind? What's the timeline of the process? Because I sent an email. I don't know, so I'll wait to do it.
So, if you send a complaint to the administration, they usually handle the complaint, and they'll support the complaint and not support the complaint. I'm going to answer your question. And if the complaint is not supported, you, if you wish, have the right to a board hearing, which you need to request in writing.
Actually, it's already requesting for the hearing, and I sent an email to the Board. I don't have a response yet, so I just wanted to know if the email is appropriate, or should I fly mail?
We received your email, and, yeah, I did not interpret the request as a hearing. I interpreted it as a complaint, as you say, but I did not interpret any...
In my, because I sent an email and also attached a Word file, in the Word file, it is a request.
Okay. So, you're, can you make full request here, or do you...
I know, Mr. Han, you filed three complaints. We'll deal with it. Are you formally requesting a hearing with regard to the first complaint, in which you've already received a response from the superintendent?
Because I followed procedure, because the complaint was about two, the first.
Right.
And I already got a response.
You got a response back on one?
Yes.
Are you requesting a hearing on that?
I will. So far, not yet, because I already sent a request for another issue. That's already on to the Board level.
That's the third complaint.
So, Mr. Han, you can just identify of the three complaints that you have forwarded to the Board or to the administration, ultimately to the Board, which... So, you've only received a response on one of the complaints?
Yes.
So, that's the one that you need to request a hearing on. Are you requesting a hearing for that one?
Not that yet.
Not yet? Okay, so the second complaint, you don't have a response to yet, so that one you cannot request the Board hearing.
True.
Then there was a third complaint that you sent directly to the Board of Education. Is, are you requesting a hearing on that complaint?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So, what we'll do is, we will communicate to you, setting it down for a hearing, and at which time you will come back and we will deal with the matter in closed session, not in public, but enclosed, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, can I know, like, the time, along with the process?
Right, we'll get you a letter within probably a week or so, giving you dates for the Board hearing, potential dates, and then we'll go from there.
That would be great.
Okay?
So, just want to know, other than 9130, the policy, do we have any other detailed information describing how the Board works? Or that's it?
What? Can you, can you say that?
There is a policy published on the website.
Right.
So, it's number 9130.
Correct.
It's about complaint and revisions.
Correct.
So, it's a little bit of high level, so I just want to know if there's another detailed process description or procedure, whatever, so that can help me to follow procedure to improve the efficiency. I just don't want this.
There is not another policy, Mr. Han. What you would do is simply, at the time when you come before the Board at your hearing, you would basically say whatever you, whatever you would like in support of your complaint, and then you leave. The Board will discuss the matter, and then you will receive a written response back from the Board.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Seeing now, further public, closed public participation. I will entertain a motion from the Board. We're going to go back into closed session, and when we come out, we may take action on one item. Carmella?
Second.
John? Okay, thank you.